Ladies and gentlemen, members of City Council, please attend the call meeting. We have a City Council to be held in the 601 Conference Room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, June 26, 2012, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Heretic?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Chandler?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
As we start your public work session this evening, we have two items mainly from the administration. The first one we have listed is management plan follow-up. I'm going to ask you for a small change in the order. We're going to go ahead and take the hot topics first, so we'll have a little bit more time to chat with you on the management plan.
Okay.
So on the hot topics, I'd like to recognize Deputy City Manager Brennan Godfrey first to come up and talk to you about the Poki Smokey Two. Do you have an item on your agenda this evening for approval? I know we normally like to talk to you all, if at all possible, two weeks in advance, but with the Poki Smokey ride or track or what have you issue, it's actually something that has come up since your last meeting, in the last week or so. Mr. Godfrey?
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. This is one of our favorite recurring topics. And as you are aware, Poki Smokey Two started operating last May, and on several occasions since it restarted operations, the coach car behind the engine has come off the track. And we've had to stop operation when that happened, and on several occasions, bring in a contractor to reset the gauge of the rail where it has gone off the track, replace a few ties, and ballast and plates in the specific area where it went off the track. As you know, Poki Smokey Two is the successor to Poki Smokey One, which operated for many years in one part of the park, and then in 1984, the track was relocated to its current location. And that's the track that Poki Smokey Two operates on. It is a full-size rail set at 24 inches apart. And as we continue to have these track problems and repeated repairs, we decided, rather than to continue to have disruptions in service, we would look at what would hopefully be a complete repair to the track. So we talked to the manufacturer of the train, Chance Morgan. They referred us to their particular railroad contractor, which is known as Crafton Railroad, and got some advice from Crafton Railroad about what we need to do with this track. They say that the 90-pound, full-size freight rail on which it rides has a slight rounded top, and because Poki Smokey Two's wheels are a little bit narrower than the original Poki Smokey wheels, that there's really not enough surface contact where the wheel touches the rail. And so if there is any variation in gauge, that's where we're having the wheels come off the track. The problem's exacerbated by the fact that these are the original ties that the rail is set on, that were put in in 1984. And even when they were put in in 1984, they were basically used railroad ties at the time. So they're in pretty poor condition. And whenever you have the rail and the plate and the spike that's holding the rail down being loose, that adds to the variation in the gauge. So what Crafton recommended doing was replacing the 90-pound rail with a 20-pound rail, which is what they construct for Chance Morgan, which will do a complete rail and train operation. And one example of that is over at Norfolk, at the Norfolk Zoo. That's another Chance Morgan train, and it's on a 20-pound rail. They recommend replacing all the rails with 20-pound rail and replacing the ties with, instead of Creosote railroad ties, using six-by-six treated timbers, which are, when they reach the end of their life, they're a lot easier to procure than going through the railroad and trying to get surplus railroad ties. We asked them for a budget estimate. They said the cost to replace all of the ties and materials and rail is approximately $125,000. So what we have on your agenda tonight, as Mr. Chandler referred to, is an item to move some unspent contract money that's currently in the parks' contract line item into the CIP fund. And if we do that before the end of the year, it'll be there for FY '13, and we can go out and procure the rail replacement for Poki Smokey. Hopefully this summer, so that we can get it done and have Poki Smokey operating on a renovated rail system, definitely by next year and possibly even before the end of this year.
Let me ask, how long are they expecting to take to do this?
I don't...
They haven't got there yet?
I don't have an estimate of the repair time. I mean, we've got a procurement period of time that's going to take us, and then beyond that, I don't have an estimated time.
And as we say, if I can just...
Thank you.
I know we've got Councilman Moody. One of the things we always have to realize at the point that we go out for procurement, we actually have to have the budgeted money. We wouldn't just be able to, unless we're doing our request for, you know, confirmation.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Brennan, I think I heard you say that the train wheels were a little bit of a different gauge than the Smokey Poki One. Obviously, there were some specs set so the train would fit the track. Can't we go back on the manufacturer of the train? I mean, don't they share some of that responsibility?
We did ask the manufacturer before Southeastern Virginia Community Foundation, formerly the Portsmouth Community Foundation, started the process of raising money for the replacement train. At that time, the question was asked, will the new train work on this track? And they said yes. I don't have anything in writing. We just had, you know, a verbal assurance that it would work. And I think that was probably in the 2006 timeframe, so I don't know...
There was no contract?
Who actually came to inspect the track and give us assurance that it would work. But they saw the track and knew what its condition was, and said this new train will work on that track.
I tell you what, it's hard to believe that somebody didn't have that in writing. I mean, to take possession of a train that don't fit the track, that defeats the whole purpose. We missed part of last summer, or last fall, and I guess last summer, actually.
Yes, sir.
So now we're going to miss some of this summer. Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Godfrey. Councilmembers, next item we're going to have, I'm going to have Mr. Patrick Small, Economic Development Director, come up and just chat with you about something that's come up today, in terms of one of our properties, probably within the last couple of hours, you know, but give an update relative to North Pier.
Yes, you are, Patrick.
Yes, you're right. Mr. Small?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Good evening, members of council.
This is a well-asked mate. You're back again, huh?
Well, appreciate the vote of confidence. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
The project last night that Chairman Brown mentioned from the EDA regarding the North Pier and the Desink property is what I'm here to update you on this evening. The chairman led you to believe that the transaction was imminent on those two properties, and it is. This morning, the Economic Development Authority met. Both of your liaisons were in attendance for that. And at the conclusion of the closed-session portion of that meeting, the Economic Development Authority voted to enter into a sale-and-purchase contract with the Breeden Companies regarding both of those two properties. This does not include the Water Street property, which we've talked about in the past, but it is the Desink piece and the North Pier property. Both essentially multifamily projects. We'll work to get some commercial in those as well. Roughly 250 units in total. The price is on a sliding scale. It's actually per door, $15,000 per door for the property on the North Pier, and $11,500 per door for the Desink site. Now, as everybody in the room, I think, is familiar, at least at this table, there's significant development costs associated with the North Pier. We'd given you a briefing on that in the past. The property is unsound for development. It's going to be significant reconstruction work. That estimate's previously been reported at about $4.1 million, $4.2 million. So the $15,000 per door that that property will yield is going to need to be backed off of that site development cost. And as it relates to City Council, what that amounts to is the Economic Development Authority will be coming back to City Council to request your participation in a cooperation agreement with them. Very similar to the economic development incentives topic that we discussed last night. We're looking at somewhere less than a five-year return on investment from the city and the authority's contribution of the project. So we wanted to come here tonight, as soon as the EDA had let out this afternoon, and let you know that deal has been authorized for signature, and that you should expect us to come back and see you soon for the participation piece.
Okay. Very good. Now, in summary, you said 250 apartments. We're talking...
Total, sir.
How many across the street here at Desink? 180 or 130?
110 plots, minimum of 110.
Here, and then the balance over here. Okay. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. On the return on investment in five years, that's good. What kind of occupancy rate is that based on?
It's based strictly on your real estate tax rate.
Okay, tax rate, not occupancy rate.
And it is strictly on the real estate. So anything that you net from the residents on personal property or any other inherent taxes, we ran the numbers strictly on real estate.
How about the, what are the apartments scheduled to rent for?
They have not given us a price for that, nor have they given us any renderings yet of what the buildings will look like. What the contract allows them to do is go out and start to spend significant amounts of money on design and engineering. The first thing they're going to need to do is really shore up those numbers on the North Pier, which is what EDA will come back to you with. And they're also going to need an agreement with your parking authority for some of their overflow parking potentially, and a number of other contingencies. Obviously, there's special use permits that'll be needed for those sites. More and more of those details will come out as we go forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Heretic?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to recognize Patrick. You know, the meeting this morning had a bit more good news than just this. And I know we can't take the wraps off some of that just yet. But I think that everyone will be very, very favorably impressed by the work that you and your staff and the EDA have done to bring some of these deals to the table. I think we will be, as an entire community, we'd be very, very gratified with your hard work. And I think this is the first round of some potentially very good news all around the community. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Good job. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Small. Okay, councilmembers, the next item we'd like to talk to you on, hot topics, regards an emergency management response that we had to respond to homes. It is a current topic. It is something that's still under investigation at this point. However, we wanted to take a minute or two just to kind of let you know some of the ramifications of our response, staff-wise, from an emergency management perspective, in terms of the agencies who responded, and what we can share with you at this point. So we're not sure how many questions we may answer in presentation, or how many we'll be able to answer afterwards. But it is still an ongoing investigation. But again, we wanted to take a minute or two just to make sure you all are up to speed with what we know.
Okay.
And we have with us Deputy Chief Troy Tilly. Chief Tilly?
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, good evening. I was asked to give a brief synopsis on the fire department's response to a CO emergency that we responded to last week. Before I get into the presentation, I'd like to ask that all questions associated with this response to be held to a later date due to the investigation. On Thursday, June 21st, at 9:02 AM, Portsmouth Fire Rescue and Emergency Services was dispatched to a respiratory arrest on 1702 South Street. Upon arrival at 9:03 AM, Portsmouth Fire Engine Number One found one male and one female deceased in the apartment. A CO monitor was taken into the apartment. The initial reading was 1,440 parts per million. The United States Environmental Protection Agency establishes the residential levels are not to exceed nine parts per million over an eight-hour period average. Therefore, the apartment was evacuated immediately. Additional resources were called to the scene to include Columbia Gas employees who turned off the gas source to the structure. The adjacent apartments were evaluated. Elevated readings were found in those apartments also, 1704 South Street and 1220 Lansing Avenue. Due to those readings, the building was evacuated, and occupants were taken to a nearby medical staging area. They were tested for any potential exposure to CO at that time. The decision at that time was to conduct a systematic unit-by-unit evaluation of all 210 apartments within that complex. Work groups comprised of fire, Columbia Gas, PRHA, were assigned to this investigative group. The findings showed 28 units with elevated levels of CO within the structure, within the complex. An additional 15 units had issues related to their hot water heater and ranges, stoves. Due to the high heat temperature out there that day, a shelter was established at the community center for the evacuated residents. Here, medics set up a medical center in which 151 occupants were assessed for CO exposure. Fifty-four of those occupants tested positive for at least some type of CO, though no one required any transport to the hospital. As the emergency investigation was completed, investigation was turned over to PRHA, and the emergency incident was closed at 6:41 PM, an all-day event. Once again, I'd like to ask that all questions be held until after the investigation's complete.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Manager? All right. Thank you, Chief Tilly. Okay. We're going to take the next item, which was the first item we had listed, management plan follow-up. And I'm going to ask Ms. Justine Jones, who's working in the manager's office, a budget management analyst, to join us, as she has worked on the project here. And the attachment that you have has the city logo on the top portion. And we'd appreciate if you just... And if you... ...piece of time, your second attachment to that is a copy of the management plan document. It's attached to...
Okay.
If you could just step away a little bit.
If you could pull over the part for a second, just separate, if you help with the conversation.
As I frame up our conversation, this is the last item that the administration would have for you all tonight. You remember, we had shared with you a draft of the management plan, comprehensively showing you the various projects that we are going to work on as the administration for the next year, beginning July 1st. Couple of things that you all had asked us for, and the one page that you have represents the community and economic development. One page of the plan, and we want to draw your attention, and I'm going to have Ms. Jones walk you through in a second, is the project for Parks Recreation Leisure Services Master Plan. What we wanted to do tonight, because council had a couple of pieces of conversation, two things that you'll remember from your last meeting, you had asked us to establish an additional column in terms of briefings, last and next update. So we've added that column here on the right-hand side. And then you also had talked a little bit about prioritization, you know, which projects come first, that type of thing. So what we wanted to mention to you, process-wise, is the next document that you have with the sailboat represents, again, a sample. And we wanted to walk you through one idea that we had this evening by using the Parks Recreation Master Plan as one of the projects that's in the plan, so you have a better idea of how things go from here. The document that you have here, Ms. Jones is going to walk you through it, would be what we call a project charter. Okay? So it's got a lot of detailed information about that particular project. The thing that we want you to realize as we walk through this is we will go through the process now of initiating a charter document like this for every project that's in the management plan. Okay? And when you kind of see this and get the gist, you'll have a better idea in terms of how the work gets done, how it'll be reported. So I'll turn over to Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Mayor Wright?
How you doing?
Mayor Whitehurst, members of council. Again, I will provide a brief overview of the charter, which will be attached to the management plan, and then summarize the master plan for Parks Recreation and Leisure Services as our sample, and then discuss the communications process. So if you, referring to the top-line project description, that lays out the scope of the work the project is anticipated to accomplish. The next line, project purpose, explains why we're doing the project. The administrative committee assignment is the project under which the committee, which committee it falls under. Roles and responsibilities, notes each individual associated with the project, and the component of the project he or she is responsible for completing. The vision and principle shows how the project aligns with the vision. The project goal and accomplishment, explains what the project will be achieved. Targeted completion date is the estimated date of conclusion based on a preliminary analysis of major milestones that will occur throughout the duration of the project. Quarterly milestones achievements ensures that the project is making incremental progress, excuse me, between quarterly assessments and attempts, to the extent possible, to mitigate any potential obstructions that may impede with the completion of the project. Sources of funding lists the types of resources that are used to finance the project, and any additional resources that are needed to complete the project are also listed. The project status describes the overall health of the project, notes any significant issues that might have been encountered between reporting dates or those that are anticipated in the upcoming quarter.
About the format that you have here, and again, this document has literally been written as if it were in a plan, or actually, I believe, as if it were in a management plan a year ago, to give you a better idea that this is what would be tracking, this would be the project status. And it really does reflect where this project is physically right now. If you look at the project status, you've got an item on your agenda that would be the second reading. A couple of things that we'll mention, it would be our goal to be able to report things out to you all at least on each quarter, as one thought. You know, as where our committees go through monthly meetings in terms of tracking projects and getting the work done. The other thing that we're working on, too, is in terms of best methodology. You know, will we use some type of Intranet-type format or Internet-type format? So for the greatest of ease, it might be something that's online that you can access and check at any time, as opposed to, you know, killing trees and presenting a whole lot of paper. The other piece of it, too, that I think is going to be most helpful, our department heads will actually be going through more of a little bit of a charter preparation workshop, and we've targeted July 2nd to get that process underway, so we can start that process of quickly writing all the charters that are in the management plan. So again, they'll be something that's accessible. I think one of the things...
Who's running through that workshop? Who are you running through there?
Department heads.
Okay.
The folks who literally have to do the work.
Okay.
To actually go ahead and chart out, you know, this is how the work will break down.
Okay.
And they'll use this template, if you will, to formulate every project that's in the management plan to get that done. The thought then, too, is at that point, with every project catalogued, if you will, with its own charter, we can probably come back in the next month or so with somewhat of a chart that actually shows you the project title and the duration, you know, almost a timeline. So you could literally be looking at a piece of paper, too, that tells you all of what's going to be done, what's going to be reported on in the first quarter, second quarter, and remember, quarters every three months. So again, you'll have a better idea. And this really digs back to the heart of, you know, some of the conversations that you all had the other week, as council members started talking about prioritization. I think another thing that will be helpful is if y'all are able to look at that in the next couple of weeks or so, and know, you know, these are the projects that are chartered at this point. It will be helpful for us for any small or minor adjustments that we might have to make. And I'll give you an example. Say there was a project where we were talking about, you know, some of the retirement plans and the solvency. We may come back to the management plan charter-wise and say that we plan to have some responses back to you all, say, in the next nine months. Council may have more of an issue and kind of feel, hey, that's something that we really need y'all to knock out maybe in the next six months. And we'll make that appropriate adjustment there, you know, and change the calendar around a little bit, put some more resources behind it. Because again, that might be something that's more so on the forefront. If you think about it, we know it's an issue, and it's something that we want to tackle in the year, but there may be some minor adjustments that might be on the forefront for you all as priorities shift and change as well.
Okay. So every, every one of the charter items, how many are actually going to be chartered of the items? Because the last sheet you gave was had a longer list of everything.
Every project...
Within the year.
Well, every project that was listed in the management plan, under each section, will have a charter document.
Okay.
A one-page document, just like that.
All right. Perfect. Okay. Mr. Moody?
This is real good, Mr. Manager. Under source of funding to complete the project, that's good. This particular one says operating. I think it'd be good to have a, what those funds amount to, to bring the project to fruition. And as it progresses, a little check on whether it's on budget or not, you know?
Okay.
If there's agreement on that, I'd like to suggest that.
Well, that would, it ought to fall down here, under the project status. If there's any hiccups, you should be able to annotate down there where we are, percentage complete, 75, whatever. So we are...
And one of the things we'll mention, too, that we've talked about, because this is an ongoing process, when we get to the quarterly report format, and we'll be looking to share that with you as we're formulating that, too, we might be able to give you a document either electronically or in writing, if you will, that might show maybe the project description, and then the project status. Just pull that from all projects, so you have it in one place, as opposed to having to look at each individual sheet.
That'd be a high-level summary of this, but what he just recommended would still be good on each individual as well. Okay. Mr. Cherry?
I have a same concern about the plumbing. Mr. Moody wants to ask my question.
All right. Good deal.
Any other questions or comments? Because what we'd really ask you at this point is, if you feel comfortable consensus-wise, because this is not an agenda item, we would go ahead and move forward with the management plan. I think there was one adjustment, and we appreciate your time and some individual conversations. We did include a project that Vice Mayor Whitehurst had mentioned on the cemeteries piece, just kind of a plan. So we did include that as well. And if there's consensus to move forward from council, we'll go ahead and move forward, start our charter process, and keep you all in the massive loop of what's going on.
Okay. Very good. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
And also thank you, Mr. Small, too.
Good.
Okay. And that is all we have for council liaisons reports here.
Councilmembers, do you have any liaison reports this evening?
I have a report. It may not be a liaison report, but two nights ago, I woke up at 3:00 in the morning, couldn't go back to sleep. Somebody had asked a question of me about Portsmouth. And I sat down, and you have in front of you a, my rendering of what is Portsmouth. Portsmouth is a college town, a military town. And all these things on here is what I see Portsmouth as being. We have 11,000 students from TCC that eat food, have a lot of fun. And you'd think we'd say that to some people that want to offer, say, to come here and build something, or set up some shops. All this stuff, I think we need to be refined, and we need to have somebody to come in and tell us how to put this all together. We have great restaurants, we have a walkable-scale community, we have deep water from here, centrally located. In 200 miles, you can have freshwater fishing, saltwater fishing. All these things are right here. And if you look at where we are today, we are west of the water. We have ingress, egress, other than going to north, with or without toes. We're in a good shape to do that. I think we need to look at this and come up with some other items. I tested this last night. I gave it to a couple of members of council and a couple of people that was here yesterday. They seemed to like it, so...
Yeah, it's good stuff. Okay.
All right. Very good.
I want to put it on the shelves. Make it come alive.